So let's get started, everybody. And I'm sorry, my internet's a little laggy, so if it cuts out, just message me. I just put in the chat the same document that I emailed you all about two hours ago. I just went through our list of bills and tried to simplify our lives by paring it down to the stuff that NHSBA said at our last meeting still may impact our district and is as of at least this afternoon not dead yet. So there were several bills that were either retained in committee or were identified as inexpedient to legislate, which for the sake of our purposes, I think means we don't have to worry about them so much. And there was a few others where I think we cared about the issues, but NHSBA said, well, if you don't really have the specific thing happening in your district, that it may not impact you enough to devote your time. So I'm very open to putting other things back on our list to look at if I took anything away that somebody was very interested in. But I just was trying to scale down our work. So what I did was group the bills into four buckets based on our four different legislative principles. And since Tish is running late, if it's okay with you all, I thought we might start with the easy stuff first. And we can circle back to make sure that she's on board with the selections and has a chance to weigh in. But I suspect that there's some that would be a pretty quick conversation. So unless there's any objections, I might want to start with the end and the health and safety bills and put you on the spot, Zach, because all of those seem to have something to do with qualifications for various. I mean, one was for using Narcan, one was for certifications for nurses, and one was for licenses for psychotherapists. Do you have any firm feelings about any of those?
So, so, yeah, the ones you're asking me to weigh in on heavily are the ones where I had like no position, no position. You know, I think the, I'll pull up really quickly because I did reach out to Karen Upcard, who oversees our nurses.
Oh, great.
And previously, I have the other, let me just see, but I don't think she had a strong opinion. But give me just a minute, I'll pull up that email.
This is where the nurses have to have certain certification requirements.
So, yes, so the first one on the Narcan, I believe that the real distinction there is that the nasal spray is a relatively recently approved option instead of the pen injectors. So I'm sorry, that's not for Narcan, that's for anaphylaxis, not Narcan, I apologize, I misspoke. But these are for the severe allergic reactions. And so, you know, the Epi pens that kids often carry and we start to stock, you can now do an inhaled version. So I don't know that we would oppose that for any specific reason, but I just didn't want to necessarily.
So let me give you the nurse, the nurse perspective, so this is, yeah, on 63.
Yeah.
I'm support, in support of this update, it expands our permission to store Nefi nasal spray. The device is certainly less scary to administer and take instead of two auto injection devices and can remove some of the fear people may experience about finding the cells in this situation. So that's, that's as good, anything I would contribute, so the nurse, nurse lead says we're in favor of that one. And then, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I was just curious with the other ones.
Going 208, I didn't ask her, I didn't ask her to weigh in on psychotherapy. But I did check on the 208. Not sure about this one, it seems like it's lowering the bar for school nurse certification eligibility. I suppose it makes it possible for districts who might struggle to find a qualified nurse under the RSA to expand their search to nurses who may not have pediatric experience. The problem from this perspective that the school nurse, school nurses practice very independently without much support from colleagues, unlike a hospital where you always can conference with a peer. Both pediatrics and school nurses are nursing specialties. So you would want to have a nurse on hand who has experience and specific skills. I think about this one, similar to the halftime teacher provision where, where there's this like kind of de-professionalization of the workforce. It's kind of a lowering the bar and it's because people are struggling to find people for some of these positions. Just don't know that lowering the bar in these areas is the way to go. So that'd be my two cents, and I think semi-reflective of what Karen's saying.
That is really helpful. I think my understanding of both the one on school nurses and on the psychologists, it is reducing some of the licensing requirements and it is intentioned to make it easier to hire for these roles. I mean, we could stay out of it, or we can weigh in if we feel strongly about it one way or another, but I think that is the intention. And did you have any thoughts on the psychotherapy one or not really?
My initial, my initial on that was reasonably kind of agnostic. It's, it's, you know, we're, again, I worry about the de-professionalization of some of these, some of these roles. I also don't think right now for us, these are not affecting us on a day-to-day basis.
So we don't have trouble hiring nurses or therapists for the most part?
For the most part, and we don't do a lot of folks who are doing direct, direct psychotherapy anyways, very often. So, but we, we, I will say that these, that, you know, we don't have as many applicants for these positions as we do for other roles. And that's particularly true around some of the kind of the psychologist-y therapy-ish positions, although we don't, like I said, we don't do a lot of direct therapy through those folks. So, but, but there are definitely places around us who can't get qualified people to do this work.
Oh, here comes Tish.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Hey, Tish.
Hi, sorry for the delay. My new job is, I'm on, I'm on day three and tired.
I bet. How's it going? Are you enjoying it so far?
Yeah, it's just overwhelming. Everything I'm learning is overwhelming. It's gonna be a job where I'm not gonna be bored. There, as I was told today, they, I will never catch up, so, which is fine. It's fine, and it's a job I can put on my earbuds, listen to music, and just zone out as I'm doing my accounts payable stuff, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Did you try to promote you to being a panelist?
Okay.
Like if you, if you want to utilize your camera, you can and stuff, so.
Yeah, all right.
You don't have to, don't feel any pressure to, you're fine. But if you're feeling exhausted and happy, have the camera off, go for it.
Well, I think with these, that maybe we, we want to pick how many bills, Lisa, that we want to concentrate on, maybe these wouldn't be in that category?
So I wouldn't say that there's a hard and fast number, but I agree with you, Nancy, that we want to be targeted and strategic about what we bring to the board. So if our school nurse is agnostic on some and sees one, I mean, I think that 63, as far as I know, is gonna pass. There's nothing controversial about it, the one on the Epi pens. It's just reflecting that the law specifically says right now auto injector, like needle device. So in order to allow the spray version, they have to amend the law. So I don't think it's controversial. I feel like if we wanted to support it, I wasn't sure if there was going to be any financial implications in terms of do we then have to stock these, but I don't think there is at this point any mandate, it's still up to the district. So, you know, when I put this on our list, we weren't really sure what they were going to tell us about it.
Sure.
So, Tish, what we were doing is I just put the link in the chat in case possibly you've been busy at work all day and are just. So the link that's in the chat is to a Google Doc where I pared down our list of bills just to 21 that are both still alive. And NHSBA had said at our last meeting may have some likely impact on our district. And we just talked about the last three bills on that list related to health and safety based on the recommendations from the nurse.
Okay.
And I think we hadn't just settled on a decision, but it sounds like the thought is maybe that none of those rise to the level of we need.
Okay. So I go into chat and I don't see it.
Does anyone else see the link or is it not?
It's because, if you can just repost it.
Oh, because Tish wasn't in there?
I came in late, okay. Nope, that's okay, there it is.
Okay, my apologies.
Okay, no, thank you, I am, and I'm also on my phone too, so. I'm turning upside down to see it all here.
That's okay. So there's three bills there, Tish, the first one is to let the nurses use both Epi pens and a nasal spray version to treat severe allergic reactions. And then the next two, I think, are reducing the credential requirements for school nurses and for psychologists, which we don't think is an issue in our district, but might be an issue for some districts where they have a harder time hiring. So I think the thought was maybe to sit these out, but if you want to like look through it or you have thoughts, you can certainly.
Okay, I'm actually not seeing the one about like the Epi pen and stuff.
So if you go, they were in four chunks, and I think the last headline under student health and safety, the first one is relative to the use of nasal spray to treat anaphylaxis.
Yep, yep, I see.
That's actually the Epi pen one, because the state law right now specifies it has to be the needle injection, and they now have a spray version.
Okay, all right, I see that, okay.
I don't know if you had strong thoughts on any of those three, but I think our thought was maybe to sit those three out.
I don't have any strong feelings about these, no.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to go to another easy section and go to the top of the list to the school funding bills. There are three left in that list that are still alive that we may care about. And I'm gonna start with the middle one, because I'm just not sure I have enough information about that one right now to know exactly what the financial impact is. That's HB 699 on special education definitions. And on the one hand, it sounds like it's just redefining a bunch of things related to what types of names we'll use to refer to students with different types of needs. But it also may be attached to what type of students we're going to provide funding for. And it's a little hard to unravel, so I'm not sure I can say exactly what the financial impact is, and NHSBA couldn't either. But I also feel like it's fishy, like it doesn't pass a smell test to me. I mean, Hannah, do you have a sense, are you hearing from people how bad or not this is?
No, I, I remember initially it came out with different wording and people were really against it. Families with students with special needs. With the reworking, I think it may have been tempered a little bit. And, and we're not sure, sorry, there's a dog with a squeak toy nearby. And so I, you know, I really don't get a sense of, of what this is really angling at.
That was my initial commentary when I wrote up before the last meeting. You know, it's just like, you know, I just said I need to do a deeper dive from this bill. Surface looks okay, but I'm curious as to whether or not this is the back door to something I'm not seeing. And then I didn't necessarily, from the conversation we had with NHSBA, I don't know that I distilled anything more than that. So on the surface, it doesn't look bad, but I have the same suspicions as you, Lisa.
Yeah, I agree.
And Hannah's right, it was disability, it was the Parents Information Center and disability rights advocates that were lobbying hard against this when it first came out and it was amended. I don't have a clear read on how much better it is now, but people definitely felt less frightened of it in the new version. Because there was originally some language that would carve out like OT and PT and speech and anything that you could deem medical as no longer covered by special education in schools. So that could mean a real reduction in state funding for kids, but those words are now gone. So I think.
If the words are gone though, does that mean that that is completely off the table, or is that something that they can slip in?
Yes.
When it goes over to the.
It is at this moment gone, it could still be amended, you know. It's in the Senate, the version is in the Senate right now, I know we have a million links, but if you look at, I'll put a link into our Fast Democracy Bill Tracker, so that will update, I think, each day with the newest language. So the really creepy language isn't in there right now, so that probably means it's gone. I would never say never, because things can slip in at the last minute, but right now I don't know what our strong position would be or what our strong argument would be if we were going to oppose it, because it's hard to unpack what the problem is.
And we just can't say because we don't trust them?
I mean, Tish, I can, I don't know if we take that to the board, that that's gonna quite solve our mandate, but I think the other two in this group are probably a little bit more straightforward for us. Zach, do you want to weigh in on universal education freedom accounts for the record?
Bad idea.
What, where is that one? Where is that?
That's the very first one, Nancy, HB 115. So it basically would let anybody regardless of income level be able to get an education freedom account to use to attend private school. And right now, there are certain income caps on that, which would go away. So it could expand the number of people who potentially are more affluent and want to be able to send their kid to private school and have the state foot some of the bill. There's a single pot of cash to pay for education, it could potentially reduce the amount of cash that goes to public schools, the more people opt into this.
So is this like the school voucher system?
Yeah, it is exactly a school vouchers.
Okay.
We're just calling it education freedom accounts in New Hampshire.
I'm all in favor of those after we make our public schools perfect. Then they can have money for, to send their kids to another school, so I'm not in favor of this one at all.
No, not at all, I agree.
Don't take money away from public schools.
No.
Yeah.
People that can afford to send their, their kids to private school.
Right.
Yeah. No, agree, I'm, I'm in opposition of this one.
Yeah.
I'm with you all, so this is gonna go on our hard no list, I think, and we opposed a similar version of this last year that raised the income cap, I believe, but didn't completely eliminate it. So this one, we would say oppose, and we'll figure out what to say about it in a minute. What about, I think I also know how we would think about the HB 739, which is the version of excess swap that's still undead, which would take some of our excess tax revenue that we raise in Portsmouth and redistribute it to other districts in the state that have less of a tax base.
Opposed.
Agree. I mean, I, I agree that it's opposed.
Okay, fair. And this is one our city lobbyists are against too, so we're very much in lockstep with the council on this one. So I'm gonna highlight that as a, also, so we're getting the easy ones done first. So that's the end of the funding bills. I'm gonna skip through all the fun stuff in the middle and try to pretend we're very efficient and go to our two curriculum bills. One of which is HB 50 on prohibition on teaching discrimination.
The wink, wink discrimination. Not dissimilar to from the other situation we're dealing with.
Oh, wait. How come I can't find that?
I can't find it either, where is it?
It's, if you go through, so under the spending, I skipped the next section after spending on local control of school policy. Skip down to the next section on local control of curriculum. Here. I'll paste those, there's only two of them, so I'll dump those in the chat too. Here.
Oh, here we go, I got it, okay.
Sorry.
Nope, got it.
Should have just rearranged the document, but I'm clearly not that helpful to you all.
Oh, I got it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you ask like the teachers' union on this one, this is sort of yet another one of those overly vague, potentially maliciously conceived ways of trying to stop people from teaching about subjects that may be uncomfortable or make one racial group feel like they did something bad to another racial group kind of thing. It's not so dissimilar from the DEI type of stuff we were talking about in other meetings. I mean, I think from the union's perspective, they're like, it's too vague to understand, even if we wanted to try to follow it, so that's a problem. And separately, we don't really want to have to limit how we can teach English or history or.
They don't even know when you're in, in violation of it.
Right.
So vague, and, and so then it just forces you into the safe zone where, you know, you're, you're just watering everything down or cutting out anything that might be controversial or that, you know, might bring up conversations that, you know, teachers have with students about topics, but, you know, this, this forces you to almost shy away from that to be in alliance with the law, so, yeah.
And there's so much in current events right now that could limit a teacher's discussion.
Yep.
Agreed. Yeah, I think Hannah said it best. Does anyone have a different opinion about this one, or are we pretty much unanimous?
Endorse Hannah.
So I feel like we can put this on the opposed list. The next one is kind of interesting, because it doesn't sound quite as like topically problematic as much as it's sort of prescribing yet another thing that we have to teach more in the line of cursive or multiplication tables. Like, it doesn't feel quite as nefarious.
What numbers?
This is the next one, HB 571, so this is lessons on Constitution Day, including patriotic exercises, which does beg the question, what would happen if Hannah was not sufficiently patriotic in her exercises, and then what would we do about that? But, I mean, I think in seriousness, this is sort of one of those ones where we just want to be able to set our own curriculum.
Right, and if you open the door to this stuff, how many other days are there?
Right.
You know, there should be cucumber day, or like, it's like, get out of this legislature.
Banana day.
Yeah, and not to equate, I mean, I'm being, you know, whatever, but, I mean, patriot, you know, loving one's country is a, can be a good. But, you know, this type of micromanagement of kind of our programming, I think is inappropriate to legislative level.
Yeah.
I agree as well.
Didn't they say that this was probably gonna pass, though?
Oh, it is gonna pass. That's why it's still on our list. I believe it will pass. Okay. You'd never want to vote against the flag, Nancy. Never, ever. That's very bad politically. But I feel like we oppose, and for similar reasons that we didn't love the sort of other kind of memorized math equations and spend 20 minutes a day learning cursive and other types of stuff like that. Okay, so we got through the relatively easy stuff. So I left our last baker's dozen of more, what I would say are bills that we might think about from the framework of we want to be able to determine policy locally instead of having it determined by Concord type of bills. And there's quite a mix in there. There's some that have come up before that the board has taken a position on before, and there's some that are new and may or may not be problematic, and it's just a question of do we support or oppose the content of the bills, or do we want to think about it just in terms of should Concord be telling us at all what to do around these issues? So I'm gonna put Zach on the spot again with these and ask you about a couple of them where I feel like they might fall more into the category of do we oppose on principle of Concord telling us what to do, or are there real problems or benefits to these bills that we should be thinking about?
I'm ready, speed round, what do you want to start?
Speed round, well, I'm gonna skip HB 10, because I just feel like that's a perennial conversation, and how about part-time teachers? Because that felt like another certification slash what are we doing with this, but what are your thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I would say the same, I have, I have, I have generally concerns for the system. If we start to allow non-certified people to, to teach, again, we're not at the moment, we're not in a position where we have to do much of, much of that, or we can get provisional licenses, people do that type of thing. I understand the strain on the system, but in some ways, this is like, don't, the system needs to deal with the fact that we need to spend more money to pay professionals do this work. And we need to create job environments where people actually want to do the work regardless of pay. And so I think rather than saying, let's just open the floodgates and not have any standards, the system should be looking at other ways to try to deal with the issue, which is around better compensation and, and working conditions.
Fair. Did anyone else have thoughts on this one?
Is the reason, because some school districts, like the, like we talked about the nurses and the therapists, I mean, some school districts just can't find teachers. So this might be a way to help them, but that's not our case, it does, it sounds like.
I think that is correct, Nancy, and I also think that there are some school districts, again, not Portsmouth, where, like, if they want to teach AP Calculus, they will occasionally hire somebody just to teach a couple of math classes or something. And we would have a full-time math teacher, and they might not. But what becomes, like in talking to some, and Hannah, maybe you've heard something more recent from NAA on this one, but it sounded like this was one where they were also concerned that this is a little bit trying to get around who is going to be eligible for union membership, and who is going to be covered by the retirement system and who's gonna be covered. So it's kind of like a little bit of the Uber driver version of teachers, where you just kind of get them when you need them and then don't give them the full benefits and those sorts of things. And that's sort of separate from do we need them in Portsmouth, but.
Right, yeah, this is the piecemealing or, you know, kind of the adjunct professor. Model, and, you know, as, as a union, we would oppose it because we're held, you know, or as, as teachers, we're held to certain standards. What that would then mean for, for people coming in at a part-time, and without, you know, there, like Zach said, there is that provisional licensure that people can pursue and schools can, can apply for, and it's, I teach within the UNH system, it's not that hard to do. I have many students in my classes that, that are undergoing, that are going through that. So it's, you know, it's not like it's a burden for school districts or for students to, to take those additional classes that ensure the quality of teachers, you know, it's, teaching isn't just standing in front of a class and reciting math facts, it's, it's, it's how, it's the art of teaching, and, you know, that takes a while for someone to, to develop.
So it sounds like we're opposed to this one, and then we'll just have to circle back on this long list and figure out which are the ones we're most concerned about fighting, but I'll note this one as opposed for the moment. Now, the next one in order, Zach, HB 108 on bullying and cyberbullying. I originally stuck on our list because there was some question about whether the state was gonna take over the investigations, which did feel problematic potentially for us. If, this is now just having our district communicate with another district, is that a problem at all?
No, I think it's a quick one, I won't talk a lot about this one, I think this is fine. This just clarifies who would start things and takes a murky situation and makes it a little bit more clear.
And is it fine and we want to support it and fight for it, or is it just fine, like it's not terrible?
I think it's a, okay. So.
I'm putting skip on this one.
I'm not, I'm not marching up to Concord on this one, but it's also like, that's fine, if this goes through.
All right, cell phones is another one that's interesting, because we're gonna get a cellphone law for Concord by June. And it's just whether we want to weigh in on any pieces of it. And there are the two versions of it. The House bill has a few more specific provisions, and that's HB 131. The Senate bill that's lower down is a little bit more broad in just directing us to make a policy. And that's SB 206. So if there's one or the other of those, it is better or worse, and we want to express that, we would want to do that potentially. But what do folks think?
I thought I had him, maybe I had him flip, I thought.
Did you have it flipped and I messed it up, Zach?
No, it's been a little while since I, there's one of them that, that just basically says, hey, you gotta have a policy. You can't, it can't screw up things connected with assistive devices for kids in IEPs, and you have to be thoughtful about X, Y, and Z. All things that really, right now, we would already be in alignment with. There's another one that talks more specifically about process All things that really, right now, we would already be in alignment with. There's another one that talks more specifically about process. By which.
You're right, I flipped him, Zach. I'm sorry, I'm reading it again.
And I couldn't remember which was which, but.
The Senate bill is a little bit more detailed.
More processy. And so I, so of the two, you know, I always like having more freedom around process and have, rather than have us dictate. What that looks like. And so my preference would be if one of them's coming and it sounds like it is, I'd rather have H B as opposed to the S version.
Okay, so do others have thoughts on weighing in on this?
Now, I I guess I'm a little confused. The the S S B bill, is that, has it already gone through the House to the Senate? And the Senate made those adjustments or are they both independent bills?
Right now, they're both independent, Nancy, because they both passed and flipped over to the other house. So then, in theory, either one sort of dies because they huddle behind the scenes and one committee just tables one.
I see.
Or they get to the end of the process and then they have that reconciliation and often the Senate wins that conversation. Cause they're usually a little bit more closely aligned with the governor just by virtue of the smaller size of that body. And kind of how things work behind the scenes. So if we like the House bill better, then that might be something that we would wanna communicate to the Senate. And make that position known. And even though for this committee, I would say we might wanna write like a pretty short and sweet statement if there is a cellphone policy that we wanna share. And I'm not sure if we have one that's totally baked in at this point at the high school. Beyond the sort of often away until I say. But just to say, we want something that doesn't interfere with our approach. Helpful information to give them as they are making amendments. But I'm just not sure if we have more written down that would give them that guidance. I haven't seen a bigger policy and I don't know if there is one.
I think just, but I think just in terms of any commentary to them, it would be. We, we understand the broad strokes of what you're trying to accomplish. Please, we encourage you to pass a bill that gives us flexibility about how we develop. Our policy.
That's the House bill, correct?
But they'll go, they'll end up going, I mean, Lisa's right, they'll end up passing each probably, go to conference. And then they'll duke it out in conference over, and it will be more, more likely to be the Senate. But if they hear enough people say, yeah, just kinda chill out on pushing us on detailed outcome or process. They might go that way.
Yeah, and this is one where this would be maybe beyond this committee, but if somebody goes to testify. You know, knowing, you know, this is what happens in our high school that's been very effective for our district and our teachers and our kids. And so we wanna make sure that any legislation that passes doesn't take away our flexibility to maintain this. You know, because they can sometimes like sort of overspecify things. So I feel like we wanna weigh in on this, but we just wanna think about what we're gonna say with it. And I think we could write the same statement for the House bill and the Senate bill and maybe know which one we prefer and why. When we get to there. Does that make sense to people?
It does.
All right. H B one forty-eight, biological sex.
I think we're, we know where we are. I mean, we're, we know where we are on this stuff, right? I mean, we're clearly not moving in the the direction of any of these things. Especially because they allude to, I think in the text too, again, it's been a little while since I read it, but they they allude to like. Safety issues in some facilities. Um, like, there's like this illusion, like, that's a real thing, which is absurd. Um, so.
Then we have a few fun ones where we can put Hannah on the spot.
Good.
But, I mean, I think the ones on the book banning and the obscene materials, they're getting trickier about how they write them. Um, so H B two seventy-three is technically not. It's hard to unravel how much it will impact school libraries and how much it will impact Portsmouth. Because we are connected to the Portsmouth Public Library System. And I'm not clear how high that firewall is. I tried to ask the library, they're like, we'll look into it. But I have not heard back from them. Um, and maybe they don't know when it pertains to this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I mean. You could look at a kid's record and see what books they've checked out and, you know. But you don't always get to pick where the book's coming from. You know, if you're, if you're checking a book out, I think at the public library or from the school library, it might be coming from the public library. It might be coming from one of the other schools within the district.
From P P L, like, I get a notice when my kid has a book ready for pickup. It doesn't say what the book is. And by design, you know, I mean. I mean, I don't know. It just feels.
Well, it's so big brother-y, you know, just monitoring every little thing that you access. From a library or, you know, in in research. And, you know, it really could come down to a kid is conducting research on something. It's not that they're, you know, that they even believe that way or feel a certain way. But they, so this stifles, um, you know, critical thinking and and research skills. If you're, you know, so afraid to check out a book from the library.
That's a very good point.
And and then I think it puts, you know, just an unfair burden on librarians to be the the police of. Library cart.
That's what I was gonna say. I think it puts undue pressure on librarians. So, um, they don't, they don't, they have enough to do. They don't have to worry about this.
Next one is harder, though, because it sounds really good. You know, in theory, we don't want our kids to be on their Chromebooks looking at inappropriate material. And then the challenge becomes who's saying what that is. And how broadly will it be interpreted? And does it mean you can't take art history or you can't read a book with some complicated? Subject matter or, you know, I mean, you all know what we're talking about here, but this is another one where. I mean. It has the added benefit of the civil actions for non-compliant school districts and fines and disciplinary action for teachers. So. This feels like potentially an even bigger problem for us than the library bill.
Yep, yeah.
I know, in the way it's worded, as you said, with fines and stuff, tells me that it it isn't just a matter. They're looking for something bigger is what this tells me. Their scope is actually bigger than what's really kind of defined here. I think it's a, it's a, um, step to legit book banning.
And it rolls perfectly into H B five twenty, which is like the dark horse of the legislative session, which would give. The Department of Education subpoena power, which.
If there's a crime, then law enforcement could, has the ability to subpoena.
I think this is designed to let D O E create crimes on our behalf.
I mean, we have such a good rapport with our police department. We always have. And perhaps that's why this is there, because many communities probably don't have that.
I think this is there to to, uh, if. If folks are, teachers are not viewed or districts are not viewed to be, uh, bending to the agenda. That could, at times comes out of the legislature and out of the, and in turn out of the commissioner. Uh, this was then, oh, we're gonna give some legal power to, um, force you to comply. In terms of turning over materials and whatever it might be. I think this is all about empowering the the, uh, the current folks in the commissioner's office to to, uh. Have levers beyond what they have now.
This was on the, this was in divisive concepts originally and got cut to get that bill passed. Cause at the time, it was a bridge too far, even in the context of that law, which was designed to be able to investigate teachers. Um, and they could only get that passed by taking the subpoena out. And now that they think everyone's forgotten about the other thing, they're like, oh, we're just here to help them, please.
I say keep the subpoena power where it should be, right, in enforcement. It it can be so abused this way.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that, but so what, what training or what, you know? Jacking do, does, does that department, the Department of Education have to be subpoenaing?
In what basis? You know, if that book banning bill passes, then someone can say, well, you know, I heard Mrs. G. Was reading Tom Sawyer and there's some inappropriate things there. Well, let's issue a subpoena for Mrs. G. To see what's happening in our classroom. It's all, it's, I think this is, these are all like stepping stones to. Really just. Take the freedom away from what we teach and all of that. It it's a scare tactic, too.
Yep, nailed it. Um, so S B thirty-three. Is another one that's sort of a little bit of kind of a Trojan horse, because we already have right to know. We already have procedures for parents to inspect, challenge, object to course materials. And then this, I believe if I understood the reality of this. Is now we would sort of somehow let parents have opinions about the whole curriculum. In the broadest interpretation of this, which again, if you couple it with a subpoena. And we have some sort of agenda with our S E L curriculum that we're doing in our strategic plan as an example. Who knows where that's going? Um, so it's really broad. And I think puts the school board, you know, and I love the school board being involved in all sorts of things. But this would also put the school board in the middle of a lot more than we are right now in terms of potentially having to approve. Curriculum, you know, and I'm all for having the discussions at the board level about big things, but I mean. We're not teachers.
No, we're not the experts on the curriculum. We have professionals for that.
Zach, we don't, again, I'm thinking this is for school districts that aren't as sophisticated as we are. We we never get requests from parents that the curriculum isn't correct, do we? I never know that.
We haven't had something in the last three years just come to my desk in relation to like a deeper dive on some curricular stuff. We've had, I know, right when I walked in the door, uh, I had a parent, I mean, it was in the first week I was here. Who had a bunch of questions about some concerns about whether or not there was some indoctrination. And we were very easily able to show that that was not the case and, um, and we were able to move on. But that was one conversation and I was, first week I was here. Um, but beyond that, no, we have not had a bunch of those, uh, types of requests.
All right.
I say no to this one.
Yeah. Next is another biological sex. This is the Senate version that mirrors the House version. The Senate version is even more, um, specific. Um, and. May, under some readings, go so far as to prohibit us from providing certain accommodations. To people who identify in a way that differs from their original birth certificate is documented by. You know, however, we're gonna do that, um. This one's a hard no. I know it's like one of those.
It's a hard no for me, yeah.
Well, you know how I feel about participation in athletic events, but, um. I I guess I I I I'm not really a no, I'm I'm a maybe sort of. Um, but if the committee, you know, if everyone on the committee agrees with it, then I think we should go for it.
Yeah, it would be a no from from me. Teachers are there to support students. And as they define themselves and and discover who they are, you know, this, this is counter to that.
Agreed.
Lisa, I just wanna mention that when we get to the tail end of the agenda, I know we don't have to by by, uh, by statute. But, uh, we do have a, um, in a, we do have an attendee who's who's joined us. And and so if you wanna do citizens comments at the end.
Oh, yeah, I I'm sorry, I didn't even know we had anybody on Zoom.
I didn't, I just noticed it. Just wanted, but.
No, I have no problem with that.
Folks want.
We've got a couple more bills to go through on the list. And then maybe we can pause and see if the person there has anything that they wanna say briefly, if they've been on this whole time. Um, so the next one is the Senate Bill seventy-two, which is the Senate version of the Parents' Bill of Rights. We oppose this the last couple of years. I don't think our reasons for opposing it would have changed this year.
Is it the exact same bill?
Shifts a little bit in language each year. But this year, it is very, very similar to what was vetoed by the governor last year. And I think the difference now is we have a new governor. And a new thinking in the courts about what would be permissible.
Okay. Then I agree to our original stance last year.
Let's see. And then the cell phones, S B two oh six. I would stand corrected on that and I feel like we already discussed that. And then S B two oh eight is another weird one where it just sort of sounds potentially bad. Do we have a sense of how bad that is? This was the one on having school boards and public libraries adopt curation policies. Which, I mean, I know our public library, their policy is we look at trying to represent a broad variety of viewpoints and perspectives. And it all reading levels for kids. They take input from the community. They have a whole process. Um, I don't know how much this bill would change the process. Other than it requires some other things to be put in place for requests for removal of library materials.
But I think in this one, so on some of these, I think what I had written was, um, in some cases, I was a no. Cause I I was, I said, this is a solution looking for a problem. And I don't know that there's a problem present. And so, um, so anyways, that was my two cents. I just, I didn't know that this was, this solved something. Uh, other than creating additional additional work to do.
Okay, anyone else have thoughts on this one?
Oh, sounds good what everybody has said.
Okay, um, if we have somebody on Zoom who would like to comment, I'm happy to open it up. We normally would do public comment for three minutes at our school board meeting. So if there's anybody on Zoom who wants to say something briefly about any of the bills that we're looking at. Can you raise your hand in the Zoom to indicate if you wanna, I can't see Zach, but you can.
Yeah, I can, I can see.
So if you're on Zoom and you wanna raise your hand, if there's something you'd like to say. Okay, um, so we did the easy part. Now we have to do the hard part, which is decide how many of these. And I wouldn't say like we have to have a set number of bills, but just being cognizant of. You know, the mandate from the board was try to pick the stuff that has the biggest impact on our district. And where we feel like we can make the most difference by advocating, basically. And anything that we take to the board to be considered would have to pass by a super majority. Two-thirds of the board. So we set that higher bar to make sure that we have a really high level of consensus around any positions that we take. So that's what we're doing tonight is just recommending which things we'd like the board to vote on and consider. So I think if we go all the way back up to the top of our list.
Would we definitely have the statewide?
Get asked from this group is that the two. Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy, I didn't hear you.
I was just gonna say that the swept, um. Is a definite priority for 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 us, correct?
Definitely. I mean, I think we've heard from the board every year, from the city every year, that the funding issues are a no brainer. And I think our school district opposition to expanding vouchers has also been pretty consistent. So I'm very comfortable bringing both of those to the board. Do we want to try like what we did in the past if is we just would write a really simple, simple, short statement? Where we might say something along the lines of you know, the Portsmouth School Board supports efforts to fund public education and public school construction. We therefore oppose HB one fifteen because it would ultimately divert funding from public schools. You know, something very simple like that. Like I don't mean to put words in everybody's mouth, but we try to keep them very short and sweet. Did anyone write that down?
But this is being recorded, isn't it? Um, that's very um, clear, concise and um, not overly stated. So, yeah, that was good.
Okay, and we can always, what I will do is um, I will probably, if I can wait till the recording is posted, I'll make sure that we were on the same page with exactly how I read it back. And then I will put it in the packet for the board to have a vote on in that way, if that works for people.
Works for me.
Okay, so I think for the excess swept bill HB seven thirty-nine, we'd have a sort of similar, you know, Portsmouth School Board's supports full funding of public education and public school construction. Um, we oppose HB seven thirty-nine because it would divert local tax revenue raised in Portsmouth away from our public schools and make it more difficult for us to fund education locally or something like that. Maybe Zach, you have a better way of wording that one, though?
I'm assuming we probably have language from um.
The city has language on their website that is very straightforward on that.
Language that we used last year around the same bills.
We do. And if we want to just take the same statements from last year on that one, we absolutely can look that up. I apologize, I don't have it in front of me right now, but we definitely had a statement last year.
Well, Lisa, would it be beneficial to do a co-statement with the city because we're in agreement?
I would say as a matter of the school board policy, what we do is just take them to our board for a vote. I would say the city would be very much aligned with us. I think what we did last year, Tish, is we did let them know which bills we took positions on. And I also attended their legislative committee, so I know this is already on their radar.
Okay.
Um, and we've also tried to sort of tailor our approach to advocacy to try to be more aligned with the city. So that we're not going saying one thing and then they're going, you know, and saying something else.
Right, in complete opposition.
Right, so though it makes my heart sad, we are, for example, not advocating for free school meals. And that's because the city position is that that is very similar to excess swept and that it takes tax dollars out of Portsmouth and redistributes them elsewhere in the state. That's a harder one for me because I feel like kids just fundamentally need food to learn and.
Me too. It's proven.
But that was one where our city wondered if the board might wish to be more in alignment with their position on that that type of bill.
And I would say the other thing about just the co, kind of having a co-statement is the logistics of pulling that off. Unfortunately, it can take a real, it can take a while.
Okay.
So so what we've found in the past is I think we're always looking to move faster all the time, um, and effectively do as much to the the core process that we can.
On that issue, we could certainly work towards in the future because our position on that as a board and as a city isn't going to change. So we could potentially reach out to them for next year and say we'd like to be able to join you in
Okay.
Propose this, how can we collaborate and just see what they propose? Um, because that's a good idea. I just think for this moment, I don't know how to logistically do that.
Okay, makes sense.
So.
I have a question. If they go into Concord on this, would it make sense for someone from the school board to go to Concord with them if they go? Uh, do you know if they're planning to?
They go all the time on this. This is when they are all over it. And unlike our committee, that's kind of us just doing our best to piece it together. I mean, they have full-time city staff helping them with legislative advocacy. So they have city attorney who's reviewing everything, like they're talking to city finance on this. So they have sort of far more resources on this. So if anything, we should be tagging along with them. If you use our tracker, you can actually see when these bills are coming up at each stop. And if you want to go, it's always good to have another voice. Um, but they are all over this. And they are constantly meeting with people behind the scenes. They've had meetings with all of our Portsmouth representatives and senators to talk to them about it. The challenge is in the Portsmouth delegation. And what's interesting is more cities are becoming donor cities as the home values are increasing in some parts of the state. So the politics on this are somewhat shifting. But I don't think it's shifting enough to change the reality of it for us. In that it will likely pass in some version and then we're gonna have to figure it out. But they're all over it. So I think reaching out to them to collaborate would be a good idea, but I just think for this particular one, we want to just get it to the board, have the board on record, and then we can always follow up with them.
Okay.
Okay, so for the next batch of bills on what we sort of broadly call local control of school policy, there's a lot there. And I feel like there's a lot there that we oppose. And the question for you all is, do we want to bring the whole list to the board? And simply have a blanket statement that says the Portsmouth School Board supports the ability of local school boards to set policy for local school districts and opposes efforts by Concord to impose statewide policies that supersede local, you know, local practices. We could say something like that and then say for this reason, we oppose the following bills. And then give them the list. Like that would be one way to go at it. It's less specific than we might want to get in terms of the nitty gritty of why we oppose some of these bills. It has the benefit of being more efficient to take it to the board and just say, as a matter of principle, we don't want Concord telling us what policies that we should have to set. So the question is, are there, we could do all of them as a bucket. We could put just some of them in the bucket and then call out individual ones where we want to kind of advocate more strongly and more specifically. But what do folks think about that?
So my thought is if we're going to make basically the same statement about several of them, let's make the statement and then say oppose in in the bills that we're opposed to. I think that that to me seems cleaner, but again, this is my first round at all of this, so.
Say a little bit more about what your thinking is there, Tish? Is your thinking just to have one list of bills that we oppose?
But if we're if we're opposing that list of bills for the same reason, basically, we want, yes, we want our city with our our, you know, basically our values that the city withholds. We're opposed to these bills because we want to have control over these things, um, rather than the state coming in and 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 demanding that we do these things that don't fit our values. Am I making this even more confusing?
No, you're clear. I just wanted to make sure I understood where you were coming from. What do others think about sort of a bucket versus doing them all individually?
I like that approach and I like letting it rest on um, our core values.
I agree.
Yeah, I think I think that can work as an approach. I think there's ones that have very specific things that we feel like we want to drill down on on an annual basis, and that might be one or two, maybe. But I could see us for the, a lot of it being like, it's very clear that these are not reflective of what we already determined were our values, so.
Get of bills, there's thirteen bills under local control. If I took my notes correctly, we definitely want to oppose most of them. The exceptions where we had a conversation were HB one oh eight on cyberbullying, where it seemed like we could sit that one out. Because it's just not problematic and or beneficial one way or another that we can tell. And then the other one where we had a question is the Senate Bill thirty-eight on um, biological sex because that one went into more specific about specifics about sports than the House version. So I know Nancy, you had some concerns about it because of that piece. So we could have, I mean, we can have the same decision about both the House and Senate bill. We can decide to say something a little different about each one. I mean, ultimately, it's gonna have to go to the whole board. So we try to have like a solid consensus in this committee. And so I don't I mean, I feel like everybody knows what I think about this. So me writing my mouth more is not really productive, but I guess Nancy, the question is how strongly do you feel about either staying out of this or?
Could could we make the bucket but pull out?
Yes, that's what I'm asking. Absolutely. We can make a bucket. We can pull this out of the bucket. If that's what we want to do.
Well, that would be my vote. Uh, I don't know if the committee agrees, then fine.
Okay, and so if we're pulling this one out, I guess there, if others agree about pulling this one out, would we only be pulling out this one? Or would we also pull out the House bill on biological sex?
Didn't we agree that the House bill was better than the Senate bill?
I mean, I think they both suck. So I wouldn't say we agree that one. I mean, I feel like these are degrees of terrible that I'm not personally prepared to negotiate the value of, but.
Excuse me. Um, thank you.
I would agree with that analysis.
I mean, I think the difference, Nancy, is that the Senate bill gets into far more specifics about athletics, which I think is why you had some concerns about it. The House bill does not specify anything about athletics. I think the practical um, implications of either one may ultimately be somewhat similar. You know, the House goes, we'll be so nebulous that we can do whatever we want. And then the Senate thinks if we just prescribe every possible scenario we can think of under the sun, then we'll still get to do whatever we want. I mean, I'm being a little silly, but that's kind of just a philosophical approach to whether to win by being overly vague or win by being overly specific.
I I mean, for me, it doesn't matter, uh, because I think the the argument is in both of those. Like you said, the House is more vague, but the the principle is there, I think. Whereas the Senate one specifically says participation in athletic events.
So do we want to pull both of those out of the bucket? That's the question.
Okay, I I guess so. They're related, so.
Okay, so I'm pulling those out. And then is there anything else that people, I mean, we've made a specific statement on the Parents' Bill of Rights in previous years. On account of that just being so onerous that we want to really be specific about why it's terrible. And I think I could pretty well copy and paste what we've said in past years about both of those, the House and the Senate version, if we want to take those out of the bucket or not. What do folks think?
So Lisa, I have a question. Is this under the um, local control of school curriculum as well?
So we separated, I mean, some of these Tish, it's just like an arbitrary, like we try to sort the list and some of these bills could go in different places. So the list that I crafted, the ones we're talking about right now are all under local control of school policy.
Right, but that's for that blanket statement, but I'm I'm looking at the curriculum too that we highlighted or that you highlighted and some of it is I think it fits under that bucket as well.
So, okay, um, so yes, there's a lot of bills where you could just as easily say it's an issue of local control of curriculum. Was to local control of policy, like that was an arbitrary line just based on how they looked when they first came out. Um, and if we would like to make a single bucket for the curriculum and the policy, I'm sorry, and the policy bills, we can. In some cases, like with the Parent Bill of Rights, it would touch on policy, it would touch on curriculum, it would touch on a lot of different things in a lot of different ways. So I think because of that, we said we'll keep it under policy and just say, you know what, we just don't want Concord to tell us what to do. For the ones that I put under curriculum, the two that are there are very specific to curriculum.
Okay.
So I think that's the only difference, but it's kind of.
Okay.
There's nothing special about the bills, like the state isn't looking at this as a policy bill and that's a curriculum bill, like this was just us trying to organize a conversation.
Right, but I I, what I'm thinking is it still fits under our bucket of saying it doesn't fit. You know, what's being proposed? Doesn't, we we want to be able to choose our curriculum to um, reflect our values. That's what I'm, I'm looking at this on the the prohibition of teaching discrimination and the um, Patriotic Day, that
Yep.
You know, that it's it's just, we still want to have the same power based on our values. We want to control our curriculum. To me, that it it kind of sounds the same as what we're saying for the um, local control.
It is very similar. The only reason they're separate on the list is because we had the four legislative principles that the board approved and one was around school policy and one was around curriculum, but.
Okay, understood.
How we make the bucket to oppose, I think their message will be very similar. So if people want to put it all in one list, I mean, I think there can sometimes be value to calling out the curriculum stuff separately.
Separate.
Because there are moments when we have an opportunity to be a little more targeted about that and say, you know what? Great idea about, you know, Constitution Day, but we'd really like to fold it into our civics lessons in the way that we think is most beneficial to our kids. And so therefore we are opposed to Concord telling us how to teach this kind of thing, which I think can have more traction sometimes than we're Portsmouth and we hate your values.
Right.
Which is what we're sometimes saying with some of the other. But I'm open to either way.
Okay.
Do others have strong feelings about whether we separate those or don't?
No.
No.
No, but I did want to ask, um, if the cellphone ones, did you guys want to
Separate that.
Separate those out and and lend support towards the one that is less less prescriptive?
Zach?
Um, I mean, I'm um, in terms of pulling it out, it's a little bit different because we're we're not just saying no, we're we're making a, so I I guess there's some in terms of process, I guess there's some way, I I think kind of, there's a, I guess that we should pull it out and kind of say something.
Let's pull out both of the cellphone bills.
And not, and not because it's like, it's it's hotter than some other issue in there. It's just we're kind of saying something different.
Okay. And did we want to pull out the Parents' Bill of Rights or do we want to leave that in the bucket this year?
I think we were, that that one I think does hit the hot kind of um, characteristic where we might want to make a pretty definitive and on, I think that was something that was reasonably definitive by the board in the past.
Yep.
So.
Okay, so I'm just gonna make sure that I didn't mistake what everybody just said here and my notes are correct. So we are pulling out the Parents' Bill of Rights, the House and the Senate version. We are skipping HB one oh eight on cyberbullying. We are pulling out the House and Senate bills on cellphones and we are pulling out the House and Senate bills on biological sex. Okay, the rest we're doing is a batch. I might just, just in terms of like the impact, send the curriculum message separately because I think we might get slightly more traction with that feedback if we separate it out from some of them. Our social issues, although HB fifty is still those issues, so maybe.
Yeah, but no, I I understand what you're saying, absolutely.
I don't feel strongly. So that would mean that I think we're fine on what we want to say for the funding bills. We're staying out of the health and safety bill. We're staying out of the health and safety bills. We know what we want to do with the curriculum bills and the policy bills. Do people need to hop off this Zoom though? Cause I don't want to keep people on forever. If we don't craft a statement on the Zoom for cellphones, Parents' Bill of Rights and biological sex, then we have to do it. When does it have to be in the agenda, Nancy?
Uh, I think, I would love to have it tomorrow, tomorrow's Thursday. Um, the latest the agenda.
Usually it's Tu- usually Tuesday is our in-house requirement for folks, but.
No, I know. Um, I mean, if we bounce it, cause we don't have another meeting till after break, so if we bounce it, we might as well stay out of it.
Right.
Yeah, could you, if tomorrow would be great if you could do it tomorrow.
So the alternative is either, I think for the Parents' Bill of Rights, if people are comfortable and Tish, I apologize, cause I don't have the language in front of me, but we did draft something as a committee that was approved by the board unanimously last year and I think the year before, and it was pretty similar each year. So I can find that in the minutes and just.
I can look for it right now, while we talk about it.
But I feel like if we do something similar, I don't think the purpose of the bills has changed and I don't think our position has changed.
Now that I'm, I, I think that's fine, just to issue the same statement, which also says that we are consistent.
Sure.
In our beliefs.
And I think the biological sex ones are a little trickier. And I'm trying to think about what else we want to say where we'd have. I mean, we, I think we would still take those from the standpoint of these are out of step with our local policies and we want to retain the ability in Portsmouth to set policies that are consistent with our values. But I'm not sure how much we want to say about that, especially given that we're still debating our policies. And we're right in the middle of that.
Should we add to that as well, um, or this is, I'm just throwing it out, that we also respect, uh, uh, families' rights, um, blah, blah, blah. Because it is, uh, it is a family, um, you know, the, the biological versus, um, like a, sorry, I'm, my mind is just shot, but, um.
That's okay.
It, it's also respecting a family. Um, I mean, uh, yes, the student as well. But as, as we all know, most, most of our families, um, with kids that are, um, are transitioning or, um, again, I apologize, I'm not using the right verbiage, but, um, it is, it is a respecting our families and our students as well. Um, that's where our values lie. It is, is that respecting who a person is, but you know what, I'm just gonna stop talking.
I mean, yeah. I mean, this is my family, so I know what I would say, but I don't want to speak for the whole, um, group. I think though that what we've said, I mean, I think some of the things we've said about the Parents' Bill of Rights in the past that have met with consensus from the board are along the lines of we want to make sure that our schools are a safe and supportive space for all students. And I think that we want to make sure that we have the ability locally to set policies that reflect our values. But it just gets, it gets tricky. And I'm a little bit wondering about this one too, Zach, just in light of our policy committee meeting today. Cause it does feel like, like when we did this a year ago, we would have said, you know what? This is out of line with our policies. We stand by our policies and we don't want this law because it messes with our policies and then we're in and out. I mean, it was pretty straightforward if you'd asked us a year ago about these. But.
Things have changed in a year.
Well, right, and honestly, that, that might change between when we write this down and when it gets to the board and when the board votes and when we get it. I mean, I don't know. Do you have any thoughts on this one, Zach? I love putting you on the spot.
Um, I am, I am, um, my attention's split. I'm, I'm digging for that, for that language.
Okay, um, I can definitely email it to everybody afterwards and, um, it was very short. It was like a few sentences and, um, I mean, what we could do, I just don't want to keep everybody on. Wordsmithing this, recognizing that we've already gone all, with the understanding that we're not voting on this, we're just putting it to the board for a vote and we just have to give them some draft language that we feel good about. If I put something in a Google Doc and people can just comment on what they change in the doc, does that feel like we're not voting? We're just providing some feedback and then I can try to do that. Would people have time to do that tomorrow during the day so that we can make Paulette not crazy?
I will tell you, I won't, I will not have time tomorrow.
Lisa, how about if we, you know, we, you've been working on this so hard for so long. I, I, I mean, I trust what you come up with.
I agree with Nancy. Yeah, you're, you're very well versed in all of this and you're a good writer, so.
No, that's super nice of you to say. I'd still want at least like some eyeballs from as many people as possible, just because I'd prefer not to bring some. I mean, I appreciate the compliment, but I also don't want to try to, I try not to bring things to the board where, you know, then you look at it, because if we have to wordsmith it at the board level, we'll be there all night. And I don't want us to get into a situation where we're like, I agree, but now I have a friendly amendment to change these three words. And then it becomes like a pile of. But I mean, if it's just this one, then maybe it's just this one and that's not so bad, because the rest of them we're trying to do as a bucket.
Right.
I mean, how much is on the agenda, Nancy, if we have to wordsmith one of these at the board level?
It's not a huge agenda. Biggest agenda I've ever seen. Do you agree, Zach?
I do, it's, but it's always, I.
It's always huge.
I've gotten out of the, um, the game of trying to bet how long a meeting.
Trying to predict.
Yeah.
So here's what I will do. I will look at what we said the last couple of years on the Parents' Bill of Rights. We did have some statement in there about specifically LGBTQ plus students. And maybe if I'm able to pull that out and pick up just that sentence into the biological sex statement that that may cover us in a way that has language that was at least acceptable to the board a year ago. And then we can see if there's anything we want to add. And then for cellphones, this is where I wish I could say, this is like exactly what our high school wants. But I'm not sure that I know that with great clarity beyond the often a way until I say. Um, and so I think with that one, we want local flexibility. We could even say, you know, we agree in principle with the idea of restricting cellphone use in our schools and we are, you know, always updating our policies around cellphone use to keep pace with, you know, evolving technology and educational needs or whatever. And we'd like to retain the ability to keep doing that locally. I mean, I don't know, I.
I, I agree with that. I think it's nice to have a cellphone bill statewide, but I think the power should be with the local school board.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, so I will try to come up with something around those three. And then I forget, I'm so sorry, Tish, did we decide to put the two curriculum bills in the bucket with the policy bills since they're kind of still?
No, I think we talked about making it separate to give it that extra, um, punch.
Then that's a separate bucket and we have language from last year when we opposed some curriculum bills where it was a very short and sweet, something along the lines of the Portsmouth School Board supports the ability of local school districts to set curriculum for local schools and we therefore oppose this because it takes that ability out of our hands.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, did we just get through a whole list?
I think so.
I think we did. That was faster than you expected.
Well, I really appreciate all your time. I know this is like very slow work. I think it's important work and I wish we could make it faster, but I think we see what happens sometimes when people move a little too fast um, in politics lately and hopefully we're taking positions on things where we're making informed decisions and at least advocating in a way that's consistent with our values. So I think I've got my marching orders. I will do my best to, I've got to check in with my kids and then I will try to type something out and circulate it out to you guys tonight. And, you know, Nancy, if you see anything before it goes to Paulette and you're like, oh, I wonder about this language or somebody else does, I can certainly tweak it. Like I'm not trying to like get too precious with the language. I'm just trying to avoid the eighty-seven amendments at the board level.
What was really good about what we, um, uh, did last year and I think the year before, but particularly last year, I think it was really about just identifying the, the pre-stated values we are, we have already identified as a group. And just saying, we believe blank, which is a restatement of that value and this doesn't do blank, uh, basically. And I thought that was really good, and it, cause then we don't have to get into a bunch of wordsmithing. And, um, I think that works out pretty well. Most of the time, every once in a while, we want to add an extra sentence. Um, but for the most part, I think that works really well and you did a nice job with it last year.
No, I appreciate that. And I think this was even better this year because everybody was able to kind of like look through everything based on what NHSBA gave us. And I think, you know, board members can still pull stuff out of the bucket.
Yep.
So, you know, we'll see how many things get to stay. We didn't have any big gun bills this year, cause that was the other one where I was, uh, you know, that was a pretty big, uh, robust debate last year on some of those. Um, but there weren't any big ones this year and I'm not sure why. All right, well, I feel like we should be done with this meeting. Do you know how soon the recording will be up, Zach?
Uh, I, as soon as I, it, it takes a little while for it to process. It won't be up, the producers won't get it to put it up to the website till tomorrow. But I can, you, I can get you for your purposes, I'll probably be able to, I don't know, an hour or so from now.
Oh, that would be fantastic.
In my emails to me.
Playback exactly what I said and make sure.
Yeah, that's what I figured. So, so as soon as I get that, I'll, I'll forge a, uh, that and then the producers will get it tomorrow and they'll put it up on the website.
Okay, and Nancy, I will get this to you guys as soon as I can for the agenda. I, I will owe Paulette like a bottle of wine and a bouquet of flowers for all of her last minute agenda stuff, but. Hopefully we'll be okay. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.